Then you're adding extra time.
Very good. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. For a call, please.
Brian Geezy.
Present.
Cody Brubelski.
Present.
David Schmidt.
Here.
Brian Lohan.
Here.
And I am here.
For those who are able, what stand face the flag, remove cover. Your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. Thank you for taking the time out on a beautiful summer evening to be here. Mr. Brubelski, do we have a virtue card?
We do. Today's virtue is service. Service is giving to others, making a difference in their lives. You consider their needs as important as your own. Be helpful without waiting to be asked. Do every job with excellence. When you act with a spirit of servant and service, you can change the world. You are practicing service when you want to make a difference in the world. Look for opportunities to be of service to others. Do thoughtful things to help your family and friends. Work with enthusiasm. Don't wait to be asked when something needs doing. Do your part to care for the earth. Recycle, reduce, reuse. Affirmation. I am a person of service. I have compassion for those who need help. I do my part to make a better world.
That's a good one.
That is a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brubelski. At this time, I'd like to read the Board of Education guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members. We work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. At this time, we are open to public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? I don't think we have. All the people here tonight are going to be doing a little part of our part of the evening. And so with that in mind, we're going to move on to showcasing schools and student learning. First on the agenda, we have CWSA update. Is anybody here? No. I want to apologize for not throwing to their meeting last night. I meant to as well Monday night. But next, Wise Academy update.
No.
Okay. Okay. And we are now to overarching results, and I'd like to turn it over to Terry. Terry's going to make a little statement before we have a presentation here. So first of all, I want to welcome those that are here to present this. Will you introduce the group?
I'm going to have John do that.
Very good.
But yes, we're glad you're here. But this, you're the first group that comes under our new format. And so what we're talking about this month is OE5, which is Learning Environment Treatment of Students. And what that policy states is the district administrator shall establish and maintain a learning environment that is safe, respectful, and conducive to effective learning. So it calls, further calls for the district administrator will maintain a climate that is characterized, characterized by support and encouragement for high student achievement, and then also assure that all confidential student information is properly used and protected. So what we're looking at tonight is our first presentation over the course of the year. The building principles have mapped out the year, and Diana has certainly been key into pulling this together. But throughout the whole year now, the board is going to hear from all three schools, you know, on a regular basis around, you know, connecting back to our policy. So our first group here tonight is from Humke. And I'm going to ask John to just introduce them and tell us what we're going to witness and hear about tonight.
Thank you, Jerry. And I'm going to begin again with who we have in the audience. With me right now down in the end right now in the white sweater is Jackie Hines. She's our district reading specialist and our reading coach here at Humke Elementary. We have Liz Arceo in the middle. She is one of our kindergarten teachers. And seated next to her in the black and white is Angie Hillmeyer, and she's one of our second grade teachers. Together, these ladies are among several individuals who participate in our literacy action team, who are also on our PLC council. And our PLC council is doing work around curriculum. And this might get a little bit confusing because one of the things that we participate in is called the PCL Network and the Center. So there's PLC Professional Learning Community and PCL Partnerships in Comprehensive Literacy. And that's what we're going to talk about here tonight a little bit and tell you about the journey that we've been on and what we've done and what lies ahead. With that being said, we're going to take a couple of minutes to tell you a little bit about where, what that is and how it relates to learning and what we're doing at Humke in regards to that. And then also then later on, the teachers are just going to tell you what they are doing now and what they're working towards. So we're going to give you a little background of what PCL stands for again. And Jackie, why don't you go ahead and pass out those papers, and I'll tell them a little bit about a couple of things with the network. PCL is again partnerships in comprehensive literacy. And it is a partnership, and it's a partnership with other schools around the state who are subscribing to a theory on how literacy is taught. And I'm going to turn it over to Jackie to talk a little bit about the framework of what those components are to that model. And together, we'll talk about what we've accomplished and again, and where we're going. So with that being said, I'm going to let Jackie tag team in on this next piece.
I was afraid you wouldn't have enough papers. I've got plenty. So just to kind of give you an update on who I am, so I'm a literacy coach and reading specialist for 4K through 5. And so in, at Humke, we've been working on this model. This will be our fourth year in the model. And our first year was kind of just like figuring out what the model is, how it works. And so if you look at the sheet with the blue top, if, this model is a model that builds teacher understanding and teacher learning, and so it's a professional development model within learning how to create a curriculum that fits the kids that you're, that are sitting in front of you. And so the features of the model are, one, a framework for literacy. So if you look on the back of your paper, you've got this little diagram here. So all learning is based on language. And so one of the things that we needed to do from the get-go was to really build a strong language system so that our kids are building their vocabulary, having a voice in their learning, using academic language and building that understanding. And so through that, we use books, picture books, language workshop books, really intentional books to teach not only how to be part of society, but also to build our social studies and science through that piece too. So we've really been diving into that language workshop. So my job is to help these teachers to pull that through in their classrooms and support them and give them feedback. And it, like Johnson, it's a journey where continually relooking, re-mapping, reflecting, looking at the kids, are they taking this stuff on? How are we going to, how are we going to change it? So that's been our journey in the last few years is really building that piece. And then this year, we're really going to dive into those real, the small group learning where kids are really, you know, diving in and learning those intricate pieces of learning how to read and also building our curriculum. So big job ahead is building that curriculum. And the, the power of that is that we are building a curriculum by teachers being involved in that. They have a say in what's there. They understand it. They know how to use it, know how to reflect on it. So it's better than just pulling a package in because this way I'm involved and I know what it is. I know how to teach it. So with that, it's continual PD all the time, that we're always working on that piece. So if you look at the 10 features, one of them is model classroom. So one of the things that I'm helping to do is build a system where teachers can come in and observe. Like if somebody's really doing a really awesome job on language workshop, we can pull somebody in if somebody needs some support in that area. So, and then with that model classroom piece, it's like helps to sustain the model within your school. Coaching and mentoring, I've talked a little bit about that technology. We have lots of resources that we try and use and pull into that. Right now, we're developing that strong literacy plan with long-term goals and short-term goals. And then again, professional learning community is huge. That's what we are all about all the time. And then accountability. So we're looking at, we've got, if you ever stop in, into the elementary room, in my room in 140, we have a data wall where we keep track of where kids are and continually look at assessments, look at what kids are doing, and then have meetings with those teachers says, how are we going to move these kids? Because that's our goal is to make everyone successful. And then, so that then leads into a system of interventions. And the interventions within the model mirror the classroom. So the kids are learning something different. They're learning what they need to be successful within that classroom. And then again, high standards and spotlighting. So that's one of the other areas that we want to focus on. So, and this I just added to because this sheet kind of just is a mirror of what we're doing. It's like learning and then going back, relearning, or refocusing and relearning and refocusing all the time. So it's a system of plan, do, review, and change, and keep coming back and, and building our system stronger. So that's it. I'm not sure.
Well, thank you. And so that's kind of an overview of what the model is, these 10 components, again listed right here, what the pieces are. And that's kind of technical, and I don't expect you to understand or know all that. But that's just an overview of what that is. But again, one of those pieces, again, that what Jackie had talked about is the need for ongoing professional development. And then, and what it requires is our teachers to be thinking about what they're teaching and then owning that. So with that, I'm going to ask Angie and Liz to just jump in and talk about some of the things that we've been working on as a literacy team in relationship to the model and also probably as a PLC council.
Okay. So we have spent the last probably year and a half, I would say. I'm working on the, the language workshop component of PCL, of the PCL model. And this year, we're going to start integrating more of their reading workshop portion. So we've actually been doing all of it, but, you know, really focused on this. And now we're going to bring in this next piece and give it more attention and refine and retune. And so through that process, we've had lots of other opportunities to reflect on ourselves, on our teaching, on our curriculum, on the kids. And I would have to say, for me, the biggest take is that it's become more intentional, everything we do. There's a reason why we do it. We look at it, we analyze it, we assess it, and how do I want to, you know, we, it's like we're constantly unpacking those standards. And this is where we want, what we want the kids to know, how are we going to reach that goal? And kind of doing that backward process to get there, which is something that we're working on with our curriculum pieces right now as well. So some of the things that I've noticed in language workshop is not only am I becoming more intentional in what I choose and how I present it, but also my students, even at a five-year-old level, are becoming more involved and taking a little more ownership for their learning, which if you've ever been in a kindergarten room is really hard and it can be very chaotic sometimes. But even at that level, they're starting to use some of that academic language. You know, they're using words like fiction and nonfiction. They're going back and saying, hey, we, we know that vocabulary word, or I know what that means, you know? So they're really starting to remember those things and bring in those pieces. They're talking more. We do turn and talk, which, you know, involves a lot of training to get them there. But they do actually now, they will turn to their partner and they will talk about whatever question I pose to them or whatever I want them to think about and discuss with their partner. And as I walk around, they're actually discussing the pieces of the story or what the character was feeling or why they thought, you know, that, or how could I change the ending or whatever it was that was posed to them. So I would have to say that using the PCL model is us being more intentional and that we are tailoring the curriculum to the students that we have every year and not the child to the curriculum. And I think that's the biggest piece and the most, one of the most important things because each year they are different. And I just can't take a cookie cutter and say, this is what you're going to learn because that's not, might not be what they need this particular year. So it's given me the opportunity after 20 years just to become a little more intentional in what I'm doing and looking deeper at those students and what they're doing and taking the data from the data wall and really saying, okay, when I do my small group, this is what I need to focus on with this kid and this is what I need to focus on with these two.
Thank you.
Awesome.
I agree with a lot of what Liz said. Our turn and talk is very intentional within our classroom. To give them the ability to have their voice being heard among their peers is awesome. It's not just one student speaking all the time. It's everybody with input and having somebody on the receiving end of that too. Another big thing that we do with our language workshop model is anchor charts that are collaboratively made and making them more in the frontline of the kids too, so that they are able to see everything that we are learning and reference back to it. So we've been trying to take those anchor charts and now put them back into their thoughtful log so they can refer back to them for the purpose of reading and doing different strategies that we have been learning as a whole group too. So those things have really added to their learning in language workshop. Jackie, her coaching is invaluable to us with her coming into our classrooms. And she sees what we don't do, and then she helps us learn as a staff and grow too, just being able to come in and sit next to us while we teach a lesson or helping us, you know, reach the next level of our teaching to be able to grow and develop those lessons deeper and deeper has been extremely valuable to us too. So those things have been very helpful to us as we grow.
Right. And as the PLC representative for our grade level, we've had a lot of support from Jackie and John both as far as giving us the guidance we need to take back to our team to be able to say to them, okay, this is what we need to do. This is how we need to do it. You know, what are we going to do? How are we going to unpack this? How are we going to create this together as a team? And so having that support system too has really helped that piece where we all can be that much more intentional in what we're doing and why we're doing it.
And then with pairing our language workshop and our integrated workshop together, our science and social studies is giving us an avenue to teach science and social studies in a broader spectrum. So we're able to use read alouds to teach science and social studies in a different way so that we're able to hit some of those science and social studies standards through reading too. So it's a really nice way of pairing both things in our curriculum to give better depth of knowledge to our kids, which has been awesome.
Thank you, ladies. Questions by members of the board or anyone else?
I think you're not the great, you know, at the end there, you talked about the PLC. You're the PLC leaders for your grade levels. And you work together as a team and then bring that back to your grade levels. And, but you also take information from your peers back to the PLC.
Yes, we do.
And that, I think that communication is so important too, so that feedback. And I think that's coming back through the data wall and anything like that. I'm going to come in and check out that wall.
It's not up here.
I was able to witness, I was able to witness a discussion of a grade, grade team working together. And they had all the kids on a chart, and they knew individually where each one was and what focus as a grade group they needed to work on. A little of that, and I was so impressed by that. Just have that common approach and, you know, something that can, it's going to be common between kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade. There's going to be, it's not going to be, we're going to have to relearn how we learn each year to a certain. I think that's so important. But I, I wanted to thank you very much for just taking the time to come out this evening and, and present on us. And John, thank you for bringing the team together. Any other questions, guys?
Well, one thing I had, and, you know, and just as, as I was listening to you, I like the system. I love it. I, you know, I've seen the other, some of the other stuff. But then the one thing that I, that I thought of is, do you encourage the kids to like, I mean, really encourage them to like go home and read to their parents and have their parents read to them? Is that part of it?
Reading nightly is push, push.
Good. I just, you know, because I didn't see that on here anywhere.
Not just to the kids, but also we communicate that daily to the parents. There's a, there's a reading bag or something that goes home every day. You know, in, there's newsletters that go home every week that talk about reading and it's constant.
I always thought, you know, if it's important to the parent to read, it'll be more important to the child. And I just, I was just wondering because I didn't see that on the 10 systems. And so I wrote number 11 down.
He'll be sending you an email.
To add it on to the thing. Okay, thanks.
And actually, this says number 10, that's spotlighting, right? This is a spotlighting opportunity. Thank you. I know what that worked on. That's a neat program. Well, I'd like to thank you for the first team that threw on this.
Yes.
So you're very brave. Pressure is great. Mr. Spring, I want to thank you for bringing this to the board. Thank you for taking the time out of your evening to be here tonight. And then this kind of information is what we as a board need to hear about and need to understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you're welcome to come into our rooms and watch the modeling action.
I can't wait to see those.
Don't feel like you have to stay the night, but you're welcome to. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
With you? With you? At this time, can we begin with board? We're going to start with Brian, but I also wanted to recognize Ms. Eleanor Lee Parish's presence here this evening. And is this your first meeting, official meeting with us?
I think so.
I don't know. It's to be celebrated. I'd like to recognize Ms. Eleanor Lee Parish. She's our student representative from the, the school board student representative from the high school. And I'm pleased that you're here and looking forward to your presence during the year. I'm, I don't think, I don't know if we're going to put you on the spot tonight, but generally in like communicating with the board is where we have a little spot for, for our student representatives to talk a little bit about what might be going on. It might be too early, you know, to let them start again. But. We really, you know, we want you to challenge us and, and, you know, I'm looking forward to the year with you. I'm not looking forward to hearing Mr. Girl talk right now.
She's got something she wants to share.
She said she was ready.
You're not ready for what Brian's got to share.
Let him pull himself together while she's.
So the papemaker pillars, I'm the president of student council this year. So that's exciting for me to take on. And the first business that we had this year was that before the school year starts, to get the papemaker pillars, which are the high schools, their val, our values in the school, to put them on the pillars in the downstairs level of the high school. So that's in effect this week. We've been painting yesterday and today. We'll continue tomorrow. But, so just that. And then we are in process of planning homecoming, getting all of that sorted out. And also, this is Mr. Birch's first year, helping the student council with everything. So I'm just like helping him get into our rhythm and like, hopefully also this year, we'll do more than we have in past years. So trying to get a monthly plan of like, this is what we want to accomplish this month. Just, you know, comparing it to other schools and seeing what they are doing and then also like implementing something new in our school too.
Fantastic. Awesome. You can use this as, you know, the time here as opportunity to spread the word, you know, about what's going on. And we welcome that. We look forward to that. Congratulations, Mr. Brown. Thank you.
Are you sure you want to?
I'd like you to come back and follow.
I know.
I'd like to turn the floor to Mr. Brian Girl.
So I'm going to share a little bit of information from a different hat that I wear. So I'm not going to be talking to the special education side tonight, but more to the Title VI side of things because we receive funds through the Native American Education Grant. And at the beginning of the school year, we do a few different events to bring the conversation of cultural responsiveness aware to teachers and then to, to provide supports to our students to make sure they're ready to start their school year. So the first flyer I'm going to send around for you to see, so this Friday, actually from 2:00 to 7:00, out at the Nukusa Youth and Learning Center, we put together a back-to-school bash for students to get supplies so they just enter the school year feeling good, everything that they need. So that way they just know, yep, I have everything I need to enter school and be successful. So if you would like to come out and just see, it's, we work in collaboration with Angelina Decora, who's the center director out there. We've been doing this now for three years. Every year we get better. There's still always a few glitches, but we're getting better and better and families are coming out to give school supplies for their students. So this is a sponsored event through our Title VI funds. So. The second event that I'm going to talk to you about, Terry, Keith, and myself have gone through what's called CED, which is Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity. Oh, and Brian. Yeah, that's right. Have gone through it as well. And one thing that we do, this is also an opportunity that we invite staff to come contribute and be a part of. So it meets once a month for three hours, and we invite staff. But this is also open to community members where we start talking, having a conversation about cultural responsiveness within schools, but also within our community and ourselves. So it covers a array of topics throughout the year that you will talk about gender, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, poverty, and all these different areas, and how to respond to it within the schools and classrooms, but also within the community. So it's a great opportunity. I invite you as the board, if you have time, it meets once a month, like I said, for three hours. And it's great conversation, great topics, and led by two very knowledgeable people because Michelle Cloud from the nation leads it, as well as Bethany Redbird, who was part of our group. She is now a trained facilitator of CED, so.
So whose name can we write down from the board to join CED this year?
I'm going to consider it. You know, it's a, it's an obligation. I've entered it once, but it is worth going through twice. It is important to note that once you make the commitment, one needs to follow through on it.
Yep.
And they do have a good meal.
They do have a good meal.
And the time goes fast?
The time does go by fast. The hardest part is just getting energy to go there.
Yep. Because it's after work hours for three hours.
Yeah. But it is a good, you know, and generally the group is as good as the people that are there. And the more people that we get in there, the better group we have.
Yep.
So I would highly encourage it, and I will consider it myself. I just got to make my commitment.
And our goal is to get community members as well. So if you would go out and try to help us get at least, I mean, we'd like to have at least five people from Nukusa. And because Port Edwards is there, and last year there was a big Rapids group. The year we did it, there was a bigger Nukusa group. Port Edwards has a few, I think, mixed in. But if we could get five people, they do give up their time and come over here. I think it's part of their responsibility with the nation. So if you could help us do that, that would be great. So, and, and the public needs to know too, yeah.
If anybody requests further information, they can contact.
They can contact myself. And then too, if you want to reach out to Terry, Keith as well, because we've been through it and we can give them further information.
I guess I'll offer myself up as well. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to contact.
And the last event we do as part of Title VI, so Thursday, actually, our new teaching staff spend the day and they go out for a tour out at Black River Falls to just learn a little bit about kingship and understand that we have students coming from, they're of Ho-Chunk descent and just to understand what the history of the area, how the family system works and things of that nature. And then talk a little bit about cultural responsiveness within their classrooms and things they can do to foster that as they teach students. So they have a day where they come up, and a few board members have been on that tour as well. And if you have time Thursday and would like to join some of our new teachers, if you haven't gone yet, the bus leaves here at 8:00 AM Thursday morning, and you'll get back about 4:00 PM. But it's a way just to learn a little bit about some of the students that we have here in Nukusa and the history of the area, so. But it's a way just to learn a little bit about some of the students that we have here in Nukusa and the history of the area, so.
I went on a tour and it's very impressive, they tell you a lot of stuff about the Ho-Chunk nation and different things. Very impressive.
Yep, a lot of information, but it's a great day, yeah. So that's just another hat that I wear and that's some of the organizing, just to welcome new teachers, get students off to a good start and then continue our education, so.
Thank you, thank you very much, Brian. It wasn't that bad, I thought.
Wait for Lynn, so.
She's got the good news.
She's got, yes, good news, yes, indeed. Um, Ms. Lynn Mayer, British manager.
Yep, I just wanna talk a little bit about the audit. Um, our auditors arrived at the end of July and they plan on coming back for a day, um, on Monday, just to finish up. Um, these were new auditors, so there were new procedures and things that they looked at were a little new. Um, I kinda told them what I thought about their little questionnaires that they sent out that were ridiculous. And it was funny, because when I told them that their questionnaires are really dumb, that, um, they said, well, that's not the first time we've heard that, and it's like, okay. So, um, we did get a little ding. So I was so focused on one area of this district, usually special education is where they really dig into. So I made sure everybody that was being, we were being aided on was licensed and I really spent a lot of time in that area and then they looked at transportation and. So what I, what I did for transportation, we, um, started a new program with Safeway, it's called Links. And it automatically creates the report, um, to, to report how many students actually rode the bus, bus, you could get categorical aid. It has to be only regular education students, it can't be special education students. So when I asked for the report, I said, I just want regular ed. So she sent me the report, I didn't check it. It included special ed and I reported special ed students. So we got dinged on that, which means that we'll have to give some money back, which is not a lot of money. Um, but it's the point that I missed it, that hits it right in my heart. So, um, we did get a ding and it's a, since it's a state program, um, there'll be some corrective actions that I have to put in place for the rest of the year. So it's additional work and, you know, it's on me, I understand that. Uh, but I'll be darned if I'm gonna miss that again. So, um, just be prepared for that finding in the audit report. Um, so as, uh, the audit wound down, uh, it, it appeared that we had an opportunity to transfer $200,000 into Fund Forty-Six. Now, if you remember back in 2014, 15, I believe, we opened Fund Forty-Six to, um, save money for improvements to the school district. At the time, we were only allowed to put a hundred dollars in, but, uh, according to the rules of Fund Forty-Six, you had to open the account and it has to be open for five years before you can spend it. So we wanted to get that account opened right away, so when we needed the money and we were able to put more money into this Fund Forty-Six, we had the ability to put it in and maybe to withdraw it then the very next year. So next year is our year five, so we have met our five year requirement in regards to Fund Forty-Six. So after that transfer into Forty, Fund Forty-Six, uh, we were in the red by a thousand dollars. So, um, as I analyzed what, you know, cause we were expecting that over a $200,000 deficit. So as I was analyzing the revenues and expenses, what came to light was, um, the state revenue. So the state revenue I budgeted and what we actually received was a difference of 300,000, $333,000. A big portion of that is our SAGE or what is that called, A G R?
A G R.
Which is?
Achieving gap reduction.
Thank you. Um, so when I researched that a little bit, I thought, well, how am I ever going to predict that revenue accurately? So how is A G R state aid calculated? Uh, requires the state to determine the number of low income pupils enrolled in each participating grade, five-year-old kindergarten through grade three in A G R schools, so that's at the state level. The statewide appropriation is then divided by the total number of low income pupils, which equals a per pupil allocation, and then that is multiplied by the number of low income pupils in your school. You can't predict that. There is no way you can predict that. So we, I budgeted $293,000 in eighteen nineteen and we received $469,000. The reason I budgeted 293 is because it was very similar to what we received the prior year. And that's usually what I have to go on, is prior year revenues, especially when it's at, it's being calculated at the state level. So, um, obviously I was off, um, I will definitely budget more for A G R or SAGE aid. Um, another difference was, uh, special education. We typically, what we have to do according to state statute is special education cannot run in the red, it can't have a negative balance. That's Fund Twenty-Seven, so at the end of the year, you look to see what Fund Twenty-Seven is, you look to see what type of, you know, transfer needs to be done from general fund into Fund Twenty-Seven to make it zero. So I was expecting, um, a transfer of 1.3 million and we transferred 1.2 million. So there was a little bit of a difference there, about a hundred thousand dollars. So as I researched it, it looks like that, excuse me, salaries and fringes went down. And thanks to Brian, because our M O E, our maintenance of effort that we have to meet on an annual basis, is basically saying, you cannot skip out on special education students. You have to spend basically the same amount that you spent last year unless you have exceptions. And exceptions mean maybe a high-cost student left the district and you were able to decrease staffing. And we have to report that into their system. So Brian has done a phenomenal job of really looking at that and lowering our maintenance of effort on an annual basis. So when I see that the transfer was a lower by a hundred thousand dollars, it means that Brian's doing his job to be more efficient. So, thank you, Brian.
It's a team.
So that's, that's the two big areas that where the budget was kinda skewed was in, um, state revenues and in special education transfer. Now I'm starting to work on the budget now, um, because I really wanna, because in light of the state budget, biennial budget and the money that has been allocated to schools, it's gonna be interesting to see how we're going to end up. So I'm hoping to have a report to you very soon on that. I'm working with Terry to create our budget and, um, we're gonna have it a lot sooner than has been in the past. At least an estimate, so we know exactly, you know, what we're looking at.
Well, congratulations on the audit. Um, I thought you'd be thinking for my visit, I was called to talk for a little bit and I was pretty scared. Now I had to be here for ten minutes, I can't imagine in four days. You know, we were forecasting a deficit, um, budgeted, we were, we had that money that we were able to put into Fund Forty-Six. Fund Forty, Fund Forty-Six can only be spent on capital improvements. As Lynn mentioned, there were additional state revenues and some, some other changes, but we also gotta remember the amount of time that was invested in some of the positions that were reduced or not replaced, um, in the, in the last years, um, to get us to that point. We're still in a very difficult situation. We, as a district, have strategic goals and plans that, that, that we need to focus on to get to where we're going to be. And, you know, I, and the differences between the budgeted and where it came out. When I, when I first looked at that, I was kinda like, oh my god, how can it be? But when I looked at the percentage overall of the budget, it was so small. And you can't predict what you don't know.
Right.
And so don't beat yourself up for that. And really what we're looking at there is, we can't bet on what we don't know. And that's where the differences were. And again, when you look at the percentage of our overall budget. And, you know, I think it should be a good sign to the community, to the board, and generally to the administration, the decision to put that money in the Fund Forty-Six. Capital improvements are those things that, you know, such as the upkeep of athletic fields or roofs or things, you have capital improvements. And there's, there was even a discussion in our talk that maybe we should consider budgeting, putting monies into Fund Forty-Six on an annual basis to plan for some of these things that kinda got away from us. And so I think we, we need to celebrate that and, and for our stakeholders to understand that, that $246,000, correct?
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty thousand. We're able to go into that Fund Forty-Six is really huge for our stakeholders and should show a commitment, um, to our stakeholders of what we value for the future. Now, again, we don't wanna just, we can't say things are okay. We're not where we need to be. And we don't know what the state's gonna do, there are unknowns in the future. So we have to be comfortable with working in the unknowns. But with what we do know, we still have some dire predictions for where we're going as a district. But answer, and that's, you know, I can't say, you know, when I say that, it might, it might sound like I'm, it's poor performance on, but it's not due to anybody's performance, in fact, it's due to some excellent performance and planning about identifying those means that we have as a district, where we're looking at those things that we need for a strategic plan. I guess those are my comments on the, on that budget aspect, is there anything else that any other board members would like to add?
I agree with, as I already said, that, so.
I, I just have a question for Lynn. You said that in previous years, you just went off of what previous years were. How close were you on those other previous years?
Pretty darn close.
Pretty darn close. So, but going up, you could just as well have been off the other way.
Yeah, and that's scarier scenario.
And that's the scarier aspect.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Lynn.
Thank you.
Lauren, you want to?
Nope, I think I'm good.
Congratulations on the audit and don't want to.
Ding.
Thank you for the investment of all the time and staff. Thank you for that. And with the audit firm, there's a lot of pain.
Yeah.
I think, who got that funny question there, the staff or?
Everybody in the business office.
Oh boy, good.
We were spending like an hour on them, I'm like, what? Finally, I just called them and says, you know what, if you wanna talk to me, talk to me, but I'm not writing anything up anymore.
Thank you very much for that update and, uh, we got a lot of work to do on the financial side between now and October and I wish you luck in that one.
Our, us luck.
Um, next up, we have employee handbook, Terry.
Yeah, so every year we do a review of the handbook and that's exactly what we've done, is review. We don't have any additions or changes and that can be found on the website. So we just wanted to make sure that we brought it forward and that's part of our, uh, calendar.
Yep, and this was provided to the board, um, electronically and again, it's just, uh, information only, no changes here, correct?
Yep.
There's, some of the names need to be changed, I don't know, but it's. I look it up.
Which names?
Thought I had the wrong building principals and. I don't know, page that time.
Oh, okay.
Page three, five actually.
Yep, you're right.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. See, Brian's the only one that read it.
Okay.
Mark him down for a name.
I just looked it up about ten minutes ago.
I caught it, didn't I?
I didn't.
We'll make that change.
That brings us to policy governance. Two of these are relatively straightforward, I think I could cover those first. B four slash S R three, staff accountability. I'll read the interpretation of staff accountability, Terry.
Sure. What does that be like?
B S three, B S R three.
Okay, yes, I'll read the correct one. The district administrator is the board's sole link to district operations. The district administrator has exclusive authority over staff and has the exclusive right to delegate that authority. Staff are accountable only to the district administrator and their prospective supervisors as determined by the district administrator. Accordingly, the board will never give instructions or direction to any staff.
Just the interpretation.
Oh, that's what, that's what you got, yeah.
Oh, you missed it. Interpretation, I interpret this to mean that the board is only accountable for the district administrator. All staff conducting district operations are accountable to the district administrator.
Thank you. It's not in my handbook.
No.
You got the updated, you've got the updated version.
You gotta get a new book.
I think so.
Um, this is a pretty straightforward policy. We've done a very good job as a board of working through the district administrator. This was a known strength in previous year, in previous, last year. Previous boards, you know, we're talking eight, nine years ago and Mr. Schmidt could probably know more than I do, we didn't always follow us accordingly and we sometimes had building administrators answering to board members. And that does not create a healthy environment. Terry, you're the boss, you're also responsible if they get in trouble.
Right.
And I think, you know, we, we just sent out all board members, there were no, um, there were no findings. All, all five, other five responses, there were no violations noted. I'd like to call for motion to approve B S R three, staff accountability as presented.
So move.
Second.
G P dash three, governing style.
You want me to try it again?
Well, let me try it first.
We invoke?
Are we gonna vote on this?
Oh.
Oh, I should say, we have a, we have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Terry. Glad you're with us, Brian.
It's too for you tonight.
He's on tonight.
I'm off. G P dash three, governing style, interpretation. What's that?
He's working on order. He's working on order, that's.
I'm skipping, cause I wanna get this done.
Okay.
The board will cultivate a sense of group responsibility, working in partnership with the district administrator, staff, students, parents and community. The board will be responsible for excellence and governing, using individual board members' talents and expertise to enhance the board entity while preserving the board's collective judgments and values. The board will hold itself accountable for continuous government, continuous governance excellence, applying a high luck, high level of collective self-disdain in attendance at and preparation for meetings, observing policy-making principles, demonstrating respect for board, staff and constituent roles, engaging in capacity building for excellence and governing and conducting effective, efficient meetings. Um, the board will conduct its business at meetings using the parliamentary rules, detailed in Robert's Rules of Order for Small Boards. The board will direct and control and inspire district operations, inspire district operations and results through the implementation of carefully written policies. The board's focus will be on the intended long-term benefits for students rather than on the means for attaining those benefits. And I'm gonna end right there. Again, this board has done just an excellent job. We, we've noted in the past that, um, our responsibility for professional improvement, that lies on us as well, we're gonna be attending a Thursday meeting coming up here in the near future. I would end, Mr. Schmidt, you've probably been the most diligent at, you know, going to some of the training sessions. But I think we as a board need to commit, I would like you to just try to personally commit to getting to at least one training session in the next twelve months, okay? Terry's got a handout of, no, that's all it's called.
Did you all get a copy of that? Yeah, in Roschild.
Yeah.
So will you let Diana know and then she'll?
Yeah, I talked with her.
Okay, okay.
I wanna go.
So it's the twenty-fourth? Did you get a copy?
It's, yeah, it's by August, I got it.
Any discussion items?
October twenty-fourth, yeah. It's usually a Thursday night.
Thursday night, yeah. There were no violations noted, um, is there any discussion items regarding this policy? Terry, any comments?
No, I'm good.
At this time, I'd like to call for motion to approve G P dash three, governing style as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Terry. Consent to John, I gotta go back. Operational expectations always, Terry, treatment of stakeholders, this is a big policy. Terry, if you wanna cover some of the highlights, I think as we kinda brought out in Thursday, Thursday workshop, the strengths we found last year were that there was a plan being written and implemented and there was some suggestions for improvements with regards to communication. With that in mind, Terry, why don't you highlight what? With that in mind, Terry, why don't you highlight what we've done for this year for
Well, sure.
O E three.
Yeah, and one of the communication pieces too that we just talked about tonight was really looking at those overarching goals, right? And, and we had a presentation tonight, but in this work, the interpretation is the district administrator will manage information in such ways that confidential information is protected, effectively handle complaints, and maintain a district culture that values individual differences of opinion, reasonably includes people in decisions that affect them, provides open and honest communication and written interpersonal interaction, focuses on common achievement of the board's results policies, and maintains an open, responsive, and welcoming environment. So as part of that, we look at culture surveys within the district. So we're looking at our parents' perspective on what they see happening in the district. We look at our staff and what they see happening in the district. And certainly, we've highlighted that each building is working with those survey results and, and really trying to make improvements, you know, at the building level, which enhances moves up to the district level. So certainly, and we also do a, we do a survey with our students to get their perspective on how we're doing as far as creating that culture. So certainly, we, we've got some ups and downs. We, we make, I think overall, we're making some gains, but we continue to, you know, look at, at the strengths and weaknesses and they, then make decisions moving forward. So are, are there any principals that would like to share any of the work that you're doing around taking those survey results and making changes at your buildings?
Well, I can show you a little bit about what we're going to be doing, I guess, at this point right now. One of the things that we've been implementing is kind of a data progress monitoring around some key data points. And one of those data points is this survey. And so actually, that occurs on Thursday where we sit down as members of our building leadership team come together and spend time analyzing and then, and reflecting on that process and design action points to, to improve in those specific areas. That includes, you know, communication and just specific work.
I just echo that in the sense that we're using it as, you know, as we get the survey results, we identify, okay, where's our strengths? Where's our weaknesses? We share that with our team. And then it's a que, we also have a building leadership team and that's a question of, okay, why do you think we're strong here? Where do you think we need to do this? And, you know, just, it help, it shines a, it shines a light on a process that's working or not. And then it's, it's, at that point, we have to figure out root causes and sort of dig into that, so it's a useful tool.
Yep.
Who's, who's the survey geared to? Who's responding to it? Just teachers or community members?
There's, so we've got a, a parent survey that goes out to our parents and they give them their perspective. We've got a survey that goes out to our staff and then they give us feedback. And then, is it six twelve, the student survey? That goes out in Gallup. We work with Gallup on, on the Q twelve, which is the.
So you're getting quite a wide range of information.
You know, that stuff gets presented here in many, in some of the parts. And the one thing that we talked about last Thursday was how many people, participation rates for the surveys. And we understand that, you know, we, it's hard to really force people to take surveys. The only people that we could force to do it were the students, right?
We don't want to hear that, Mr. John.
I said even there, it's not, you can't.
I know, we can't force. There are opportunities, there's talks, yeah. But really, we want to thank those folks that take the time to give us their viewpoints because we really take this data, and I want to say, I say we, I mean the building managers and Terry, take this data and this is from parents, from the students, from the staff. And this is a measurable, the board really looks at, so the data is very important. And it's also important for the building administrators and how they, they plan their goals. So I would, you know, anybody that is asked to take surveys, even those questionnaires may be a few less.
Don't start.
Don't start, okay. No, we want your feedback. So when you're asked about a survey, even if it's kind of a bad date, please attempt to fill it out. And, you know, be honest in there. It's not all rosy. Looks, we want, we want to hear what's out there so that we can address it. So I want to thank everybody for the time they're putting into that.
And then the last piece I'd add is that communication and a plan. So, you know, and, and certainly, this was, this presentation was part of that. But right now, Diana and Lynn are working with the, the district on creating our newsletter. And so you've got the map. I shared it with you. You can look across the whole year and get a feel for what we're going to be communicating across the whole district with staff, parents, and the community.
Yeah, it was a very.
Brian, we didn't get a copy of that.
It's, it's actually linked with our, with our document, you know, internal, external. And, you know, we go, different goals, tactics to be included. And, you know, if there's, this is the body of work that we looked at last year and was completed between last year and this year, correct?
Correct. Well, it's been an ongoing communication and plans.
It's really in the stage of implementation right now. These goals and targets are being.
Absolutely. We just met last week to talk further about it, so.
Yeah, so we need to celebrate that. I don't know if that is a strength in the patient. Definitely the communication, I think, has improved. You know, we talked pretty frankly about, you know, some of our stakeholders went away, but some, some, they weren't, they didn't feel good about communications. And, you know, I know there's been, been great efforts and part of all administrators and all building people to really try to communicate well with parents and stakeholders. There are times when we simply have to tell, tell people, hey, it, we screwed up. It didn't work. It wasn't supposed to happen that way. We can do better. Sometimes telling people that hard truth is the easiest thing to do. And, you know, it's too easy. I do it all the time. I get on my, my, my stand and I start telling people about our systems and, you know, all the things that we do great. And we do have great systems and great things in place, but there are times that they fail. And we need to be cognizant of that. And great work is to come on that. So this policy, we're not, you know, there's so much depth in this policy, Terry, and there's so much work. I can't say much about it. But as I said last Thursday, I didn't want to do all the talking to Diana. Did you come up with some things you wanted to mention, anybody else? It's going to become an assignment for the next board meeting, guys.
He's turning in the screws.
Can I get a plug in for the newsletter?
Yeah.
So this newsletter that Diana, well, actually, we all wrote, is very, very interesting. It's unlike that we've ever done before. So I hope that you enjoy it.
That's all you're going to say?
That's all I'm going to say. And it was definitely a group effort.
Is it a pick on Terry newsletter or?
Oh, no, no, not at all.
That's what's known as a teaser right there.
Huh? You'll write that one?
Any weaknesses about it, Brian?
No, I look at the surveys though, and I think they're very helpful. To us, there's some where we're really making some, some good strides and then there's some where we're not, we're just not moving the needle, so. It sounds like building principals aren't going to be on top of that though, so.
Some of the things in the, in the student data, a lot of things that may, maybe I just, this is, last year was the first year that, that they asked the whole population to participate. And so that may have to be the result for some of the student results. But with a larger population, you can only get better, better, more accurate data.
Now, the exciting, go ahead.
I was just going to ask for confirmation by Mr. Black, but, go ahead.
Well, the exciting piece is we really moved the needle on the level of engagement and we talked a bit about that last week. We really need to work, focusing on getting at least a hundred people taking that, that Q twelve survey. But, so we really, I mean, and she had sent an email back stating, hey, that's, that's an accomplishment. So that's a good thing, but we don't know the number of disengaged or actively disengaged because we didn't have enough people taking the survey.
We need more people doing the, yeah.
What, what I was going to say, you know, going into what Brian said about, you know, some things are good and some things are bad. And one of the things we discussed Thursday was the process, was the fact that, you know, it's all part of the process. Getting the information is part of the process. The bad information is part of that along with the good. So you, you just can't take the bad result and say, well, it's not working, so let's not, let's change, let's make a change. You have to look and say, okay, yeah, because sometimes the numbers don't tell the whole story.
That's a good point.
Yeah. Cody, got to get one out of you.
No, I mean, I agree with Brian's side with, with the data and the survey results. There's a lot that are just, you know, one or two above, one or two below. It's kind of hard to gauge that, you know, with just the results that you guys were saying. So, I mean, what, it's, it's hard to go off it, but it's, it's staying consistent. It's not going too far up, too far down. So it's just, you know, like you guys said, moving the needle, so.
Mr., you got one? We got one in early. Yeah, you got one. You got one, Katie. You're the first one that says something. I agree with Brian, right? But I thank you guys for taking the time to look at this. And I want to thank all of the people here for all of the work. Diana, Lynn, the men, building administrators, building secretaries, everyone that contributes to this whole process, thank you so much. At this time, I'd call for a motion to approve O E three treatment of stakeholders as presented.
So move.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. And thank everybody for your hard work in putting that together. Consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to mention here before I call for a motion? Actually, I'd like, Cody, would you please review donations for me?
Yep. Donations, backpack for kids, nine fifty from Southwood County Empty Bulls, ninety dollars from Bethlehem Lutheran Church, and a hundred dollars from United Church of Christ. Thank you to those donors.
Yeah, the backpack for kids is a huge program. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
We have a first and sec, second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Future agenda items, we have a board workshop September twelfth, Thursday. Our regular meeting is scheduled September seventeenth. A lot of important other dates coming up. Terry put them out there in the board update and we have them on our calendar. Next Monday, we have, we have the morning. What time does that meeting start in the morning?
It's a, it's a evening one.
No, we have the morning one.
That'll be breakfast.
You mean the kickoff?
Kickoff meeting, yeah, Tuesday.
That's Tuesday.
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 So eight o'clock breakfast.
Eight AM breakfast and then we have a picnic.
Monday.
Monday night. That, that's going to be.
It's on the cover.
And it's a fantastic facility, great place. I, I'm looking forward to seeing everybody out there. And then Tuesday morning, we have the kickoff.
Correct.
And we're going to have a wonderful speaker there. It's, it's really one of the, not the only opportunity, but we have all the teachers, administrators in one room and building secretaries.
All staff.
All staff.
And our new, our substitute teachers as well.
Our guest teachers as well. That's one important thing to really talk about is that our guest teachers are included in processes as well. That's an improvement and I'm glad to see it. But we're going to have an excellent speaker that day. You're going to hear a wonderful address by Terry and myself. Right?
Those would be the best.
Those would be the best, yeah. I'm just going to say what Terry says, but. No, if you guys can be there for next week, that'd be fantastic.
Well, Brian's going to actually be putting on.
Oh, I can't forget the star of the show.
Yeah. Brian, what time do you start?
Do you want to outline a little bit about what you're going to do?
Yeah, I'm talking for about four hours.
Staff will love that.
Yeah, that's a great one.
There goes the survey results for that year.
Hey, just be happy that you're not talking for four hours. We're just going to be, yeah, I'll just be talking about what drugs are going on in the community briefly and our canine will be there for a quick demo, so.
And him at the park.
Yeah.
You're not going to have him chase me around, are you? It's possible.
Have your batteries charged.
I'm going to be fully charged, gentlemen. We're looking forward to that, Mr. Mahan. Thank you.
Brian, can we talk about the October meeting?
Yes, the October meeting, we're going to be, that won't be, are during our regularly scheduled third Tuesday of the month, second, third Tuesday of the month. It's going to be the fourth Tuesday of the month. And this is to ensure that Lynn has time once the, we get the data from the state for us to actually approve a budget that's accurate, not one that we have to go back and fix.
Right.
Just as a formality.
Yep.
To fix it. A lot of boards just approve it and then we just go to the meeting and then have to go back and readdress it. Why do twice the work?
But I am going to give an update in September, just so you have an idea of where it's looking.
Where we, you know, where we are financially at the district, I think it's so important that prior to that October meeting, we have a real firm grasp of where we are and I think Lynn shares that. So when we talk about the financial updates in the next month, if you guys will really got to make the efforts to be there. Might be some special meetings. Ms. Lee, do you have any observations for your first board meeting? Quiet. Brian Mahan's going to like that. He likes quiet people.
He wanted to be done six minutes ago.
They get longer, just wait.
This was actually, yeah. Well, we didn't turn, yeah.
We did a good job. I want to thank everybody for taking their time out to be here on this nice, nice night and all the work that's been done. Let's have a fantastic school year, everybody. Teachers, staff.
Yes, yes.
Let's start it out with Aurora, guys. Have, we're going to have a good year. And with that, Board President calls for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
First and a second. Wrong call, please. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thank you for all.